And ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the October 22nd County Commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cell phones. Meeting documents are in the white folder in the corner on the table. If you have not signed in and you intend to speak today, please sign in on our clipboard. It helps our recorder to get names and addresses. And then when you do speak, you just need to give your name and your county of residence. You don't have to give your address publicly. That's the reason for the sign in sheet. And then I would remind you that we have absentee voting going on next door. And so to keep your conversations at a minimum in the hallway, to respect their privacy and quiet for them. And also no election material allowed in our room, like clothing. And thank you for respecting the state laws in advance of those things. With that, we'll move on to routine business. Item number one is a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
A motion as second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number two is a consent agenda for a motion on consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion as second with real call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Hebert.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll move on to routine business. This is item number 10, deferring a hearing. If it's a deferred hearing on the appeal on a decision by the Minnehaha County Polit- Minnehaha County Planning Commission to approve conditional use permit number 22-72 to allow a bed and breakfast establishment and to replace an existing dwelling with a manufactured home. And it was deferred from October 18, 2022. Kevin, and I'm going to remind you that we are only taking- Kevin's going to give us kind of a rundown again. And we're only taking new testimony since this was deferred from last week. And so we'll see how this goes. Oh, excuse me, Commissioner Bender, Benega. I'm sorry.
I am Benega. I'm unfortunately going to have to recuse myself because the legal representation that the petitioner has, I have personal, professional and some family relationships, so I will have to step away.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
I just want to let you know that I did review the video from last week's meeting. And so I'm familiar with the issue.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move forward with Kevin.
All right. Good morning, I am Kevin Hookman from the County Planning Department. I will scroll this up to the main site plan here. So just as a reminder, this item is a conditional use permit number 22-72. The request is to allow an Airbnb on the property, our bed and breakfast, and to replace the existing house or the existing cabin with a manufactured home. This item was first heard in the October 18th, in front of the County Commission anyway, on the October 18th meeting last week. After a couple of motions, the item was then deferred to this meeting for one week. At that time, the Commission requested to the people who are here to bring only items that were new to the discussion and not been repeating. And that any new items be presented and on the deadline of October 20th to make sure it gets in the public documents record of Civic Plus. So there has been several items that have been added to your packet this time over the last week's review. I will also review that the Planning Commission first heard this item on September 26th meeting. At that meeting, the Planning Commission approved this conditional use permit request with five votes for approval and one vote for denial. So today, we are hearing this item again. And the Minnehaha County Commission can uphold, deny, or amend the Planning Commission approval for a conditional use permit 22-72. Let me get the conditions of approval here. So it was approved with conditions. And there were eight conditions on the approval. So I am here for any questions and we can get the public hearing started.
Commissioner Kerski.
Two questions, Kevin. So the Planning Commission voted to approve. Was it the vote to approve the placement of the home and the Airbnb? Or just the placement of the home?
It was both. They approved the request as stated, so it was both the Airbnb and the manufactured home.
And then the second question, so we have site-built homes, stick-built, however you want to look at it. And then there's mobile homes, there's modular homes. How does our planning ordinances or statutes, what different levels do they control? Do they identify different ones? I mean, is there a difference between a modular home and a mobile home? A non-site-built home, you see these homes coming down the road, two separate pieces getting moved in. Do our ordinances address all those different types of homes?
Sure. So our ordinance defines a manufactured home and mobile home together in one definition. And the requirement is that it has, it's a manufactured home built to HUD standard. So it's built after, I think, 1976. And it was, and it has its own chassis, it's moving on its own wheels. There is a modular home. Some places will construct stick frame homes and then move them into place. And that's called a modular home. They're built to then the International Residential Code and not the HUD standard. So they are built to the same building code that the county has adopted.
And what type of home will be moved here?
It would be a manufactured home.
So a mobile home?
Yes.
With the chassis underneath?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Kevin, where are the conditions? We have, you know, a ton of pages here to open. And so which page would I open to find the conditions that were placed on this?
So if we go to the minutes of the meeting, and maybe I can just read them off for easiest, but it would be page 23 on the bottom part of the page of the minutes in the meeting. So let's see, I think it'd be down from this location.
I found the minutes, that's helpful. And I found them, but I found them. Maybe we could just quickly run through them or at least put them up if we can get them up.
Right, while we search for them, perhaps I'll start kind of reading through some of them. Condition number one, the house must have functioning smoke and carbon monoxide detectors as required by the building code as adopted by Minnehaha County. Condition two, the manufactured home must meet all requirements, setbacks and all requirements of Article 12.06(c) of the county zoning ordinance. Three, the proprietor must obtain any applicable South Dakota sales tax that is required. Four, the proprietor must obtain the required lodging license with the South Dakota Department of Health. Five, the proprietor shall maintain a guest list and make such list available at the request of law enforcement. Six, the establishment shall be limited to a total of nine guests of the same family at one time. Seven, guests shall have at least one dedicated off-street parking space. And eight, that the planning and zoning department reserves the right to enter and inspect the bed and breakfast establishment at any time after proper notice to the owner to ensure that the property is in full compliance of the conditional use permit conditions of approval and the Minnehaha County zoning ordinance.
Thanks, Kevin.
Yep.
Any other questions from the Commission at this point? Okay, we're going to use the same rules we had last week, which is the proponent speak first. Then the opponents have an opportunity to speak. And then the proponents can rebuttal any of those things. We only want new information, as Commissioner Barth says. He's already reviewed the video that he missed last week. We've all looked at the submit material and we all listened to it last week. So I don't think that we need a repeat of anything. So if you have something new, and so I'm going to start with the proponents.
My name is John Archer. I'm a resident of Minnehaha County. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Hagan, Wilk and Archer. And I'm here representing the petitioner today. And I want to thank the members of the Minnehaha County Commission for the opportunity to provide some additional information to you to address some of the concerns of the members of the Commission and also some of the members in the Wall Lake area. With regard to new information, Commissioners, I did forward to you, there had been a request by one of the Commissioners, some clarity on whether or not there was another Airbnb in, at Wall Lake. And we, not through myself, but one of my associates who has a much better technology ability, was able to pull the app down and find the location of the Airbnb that is currently at Wall Lake. It's had 81 reviews, it's been in existence, it's my understanding, for four years. It's the residence, it's a very large residence. It can have 12 guests, has four bedrooms, with eight beds, two bathrooms. The property is managed remotely, is our understanding. And it has no instances involving the police in our conversation with them. Like I said, the location is twice the size of the petitioner's proposal. And it has ran without issue, is our understanding, and largely without notice from the neighbors. The petitioner submits itself to many more restrictions than currently that this Airbnb has. And just, you know, I just want to make a general comment. Despite the concerns that the community has in that area for the short-term rental property that would create problems to the sewer system, lower property values in the neighborhood, and create high levels of noise and parting, this Airbnb has been open for four years and has not received any noise complaints. Property values have only increased and no noticeable effect has occurred to the sewer system. So the last four years kind of provides good historical data that a lot of these concerns have been raised, and legitimate concerns, really did not occur with the Airbnb that has currently been on the properties. The other question was that a Commissioner, making some calls, asked about Kristen Lauder's experience with Airbnb and whether there was a question about that. And I just want to clarify that if I could, that Kristen has some experience with ABNB's in the sense that he's managing his mother's Airbnb, has been doing that recently over the few months here that it's been open and successfully and so forth. But he has major experiences in property management, some water-scale apartments, along with a lot of short-term rentals, which are similar to ABNB's. And he's had that kind of experience over the last five or six years. So he does have experience in managing these kind of buildings. The other piece that was brought up when I was talking to one of the Commissioners about, there was a question about Jackie Toms availability. I just wanted to ensure that although she is, she's not a teacher, but she's a substitute teacher. She doesn't teach in the summertime. When she does teach, she's resident at 2:45. If there are complaints, they're normally at evenings or weekends when she's not working at that particular point in time. So she would be available for the most part. But there was a question that was raised by one of the Commissioners. The other piece of that is too, as we said, we do have, we will have under contract a security company to, in case there's anything that needs to be done, go out and look at the property. The other new items, we did have conversation with Kevin. We wanted to get some better background of this. And Kevin confirmed that the conditions that the Planning Commission imposed on the conditional use permit that we have were similar and congruent with others. And plus, we have additional restrictions that we've done. And I think, just to quick to go through that, we have a secondary security team on retainer. We're only eliminating to six guests instead of the nine that the Planning Commission allowed. We have a neighbor support line for the Airbnb. There's a telephone number if they need to call us with a complaint or concern. We have security noise equipment to control parties or other incidents. We're not accepting guests who have not had at least three visits to an Airbnb or who have had complaints against them. That narrows our pool, but at the same time, we've heard what the community has said. And we want to be responsive to that. We only want people that have visited and have been good stewards of that property. And we're putting in plumbing inserts to take care of some of the female hygiene issues. The other piece with Kevin is that there are other ABNB's that have been approved by the Minnehaha County where the owner of the property is off-site. And he has offered that it is more typical for the owners not to be on-site. And finally, Kevin offered that there are three ABNB's in Humboldt, South Dakota, where the owner is off-site, that the county has approved. Obviously, I have a lot of other additional information, but I think most of this was covered, although I wasn't here, but I did, as Commissioner Barth, I did review the video. And I think that pretty much, but I could just make a concluding remark, Commissioners. Candidly, there are really no other covenants or restrictions placed on this property that preclude an Airbnb. And there's already an example of one here on Wall Lake that, you know, would be consistent that it's a good neighbor and consistent with the community. At some point, it must be acknowledged that the petitioner's owner of the property has certain rights to develop and use their land. They have submitted themselves that the Commission is showing good faith and interest in ensuring compliance with the law. They have done community outreach at the request of the Commission. And they have provided as much information on the property as business plan as possible. They have agreed to additional restrictions that others haven't agreed to. And in light of these efforts that we ask you, please consider the conditional use permit. In typical fashion, I skipped over one thing, if I could go back. So just hold that closing argument for a second, and I won't repeat it, I promise. But last weekend, the petitioners did go out. We visited and they went out and visited with approximately 17 residents about. And for the purpose of just clearing up some inconsistencies, letting them know that there are certain restrictions that they have to follow. Some of this, when people signed the petition, you know, previously, they weren't aware of this. And they were able to have good dialogue with these people. Positives, some didn't change their minds, some said, I appreciate that. I think I definitely have this now, something I'll reconsider. But I, again, I just wanted to let you know that the petitioner is really wants to be part of the community, has gone out and tried to be part of that. And has gone out and even provided them a little cookies and candy. So, all right, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Archer. Questions, Commissioner Bender.
Mr. Archer, one of the things that came up is new information after our meeting last week, at least I believe, it was new information, is that there's an allegation that the property has not contributed to any road maintenance or snow removal at Wall Lake for well over 12 years. Can you comment on that?
I'm not familiar, I'm not sure I saw that.
The family has paid into those funds over the last 12 years?
You have to come to the microphone, sorry. Identify yourself again, I'm proud to keep-
I'm Jackie Toms, so 26557 and 26559. We have contributed to that because I was the one that paid us bills. And we contributed like $100 to that. Now, if they're referring to putting in new asphalt that came all the way down the road, then no, we would not contribute to that because most of the residents on that area did not, on the north side of the gravel road, did not want to have it asphalted. So I'm not sure if they're referring to that. But as far as road maintenance, you know, we've had people come and scoop us out. But for the most part, we paid $100 just about every month. And I was assuming that was to the road maintenance that they're referring to. So I would have to have more clarification on what specifically they're talking about.
Okay.
Because they were looking at trying to asphalt going north and south from, I don't, from like coming off of the Wall Lake Road. And then they did asphalt the one side, but because everyone in the neighborhood agreed to it. But on our side, probably 80% of the people wouldn't agree to it.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if that's what they're referring to or not.
Okay. And Kristen has a comment.
And just a little bit of follow-up to that. My mother and I, or myself, my wife and my mother and I, purchased the property just last month. So we bought my mother's sister out of the property. And now, you know, it's just myself, my wife and my mother that own the property. And we did that in September. So the prior owner was my grandfather, we loved him. But, you know, it's, he makes his decisions also, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bender, did you have another question?
No.
Okay.
Maybe somebody else can help elucidate that issue for us.
I have one more question for Mr. Archer. There's been comments on both sides, and I think I know the answers to this, but I just want to address again the lake access, the dock, if it's a public access, if you know, or if it is a private one. Because we've been obviously told both. And so I just thought if we would just put it on the record again.
Kristen's informed me that it's a private dock.
It does look like a private dock on the papers, but, okay.
Owned by?
Owned by them. Private dock owned by them, it's on their property. Okay, so if there's no more questions for the proponents at this time, I will let the opponents speak.
Good morning, Steve Halgard, I am a Minnehaha County resident. And appearing on behalf of the opponents to this request, we're asking that you deny it in its entirety since the last meeting. Basically, the only new information is that there's an effort to find the minutes from about 30 or 40 years ago, where they did have conversations about a number of these issues. And I just don't think that association's obviously been kept up as it should be. There's an existing fund that was there. And that was part of what was used to accomplish the road maintenance and those kinds of things. So that's happening. And I think, consistent with what one of the Commissioners mentioned last time and some of the discussion this morning, the idea of definitions and the idea of spot zoning, those are significant problems. And I think what's going on right now, which can continue to go on with the proponents of this request, is that there should be ongoing discussions and develop a relationship instead of coming after the fact, trying to put together a relationship. I think there ought to be one that develops ahead of time and have some kind of an agreed resolution as opposed to having this animosity that presently exists. And it shouldn't be a cottage industry. One of the things I didn't hear, I don't know if the existing bed and breakfast has been approved by the county. And as you can see from the planning and zoning recommendations for the various conditions, they wanted a variety of things in place, the sales tax license, the health inspection, and those kinds of things. We have no idea about this other bed and breakfast, if they've gone through any of those efforts or not. So before anything is approved, I would just ask that the Commission deny this at this time. They can bring it back later after there's been a discussion and a better development of this association and maybe some more of a cohesive plan about what happens to Wall Lake going forward. So with that, I would ask you to deny it at this time. And I think that would be consistent with the decisions that were being made last time, too. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, yeah, Mr. Halgard. Questions for Steve, Commissioner Kerski?
Mr. Halgard, is there a sewer district or a road district or any sort of level of governance in this area?
The existing sewer system that they have, as was mentioned before, is set up for something like 90 homes. And I think there's 130-some homes that are accessing that sewer system. And I don't believe that's really put together as an association formally either. So those things need to happen. And I, Wall Lake could become a beautiful place and well-organized and well-managed. But right now, it's been dependent upon relationships and presumptions. And this, part of this discussion with the minutes, trying to find the minutes, was a discussion that was had, I think, 40 years ago about, let's not have any more mobile homes out there. So that was part of what was going on, they're trying to find those minutes. But right now, it's just based on recollections. So both a sewer association and a road association, those need to be in place. One of the things that did take place here in the past was some sort of a bike trail. And there was problems with that as well. So a number of things that need to be set up and organized before something else goes forward. And I would just hate to see the county end up in a situation where you're approving something here and it disrupts a better plan going forward. And I do think a plan can develop. It just needs to be a discussion before the fact as opposed to after the fact.
Additional questions for Mr. Halgard? And give, is there anyone else on your team that wants to speak? Any other opposition that wants to speak?
I don't think we have any new information.
They had two people raise their hands, but it has to be new information. So if it is, you can come up and identify yourself. You just give your name and county of residence, and then just make sure you sign on the back sheet.
Bill Huffman, Minnehaha County. I live on Wall Lake. I was also president of the sewer board for 15 years. There is an association registered with the state of South Dakota. And we are under their inspections every year. At the time, when I was on the board, there were two trailer houses that were on the lake. One on South Shore and one on West Shore Place. And those eventually were removed because of deterioration in the neighbors. Land was purchased and they were demolished. At that time, the sewer board felt that they did not want to have any more trailers because there was so much trouble amending to them, getting to repairs, under the trailers, inspections. So at that time, we decided we didn't want any trailers. And that was a long time ago, so, and I'm not on the board anymore. Also, in regards to the lake access, that is a public lake access over there. And I have the eligibility on my property to have five trailers at this point, if this is approved. And there's many others around there. So pretty soon, if this is approved for a trailer, we're going to have a trailer camp. And it's going to deteriorate everybody's property. And that's all I have. If you have any questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Huffman? Okay. All right. Is there anybody else on the opponent's side that wanted to speak with new information? You have to identify yourself.
Cindy Steinhour, Minnehaha County. I just wanted to clarify that there was a sewer district and Mr. Huffman has done that for you.
Okay, thanks Cindy. Okay, and give it back to the proponents for any clarification of comments that were made.
Thank you, Commissioners. First of all, with regards to the comment that, you know, let's go back and talk with the, you know, residents and try to make that work. And we have had those conversations. There's been many hearings here between the Planning Commission and what we've had in front of here. There's been conversations there. We have no animosity towards anybody. That's not our phrase, that's theirs. And I think some of that's coming maybe from some of the opponents. And my concern with that is, is that, and I don't disagree with that concept, and I know that was a concept that Commissioner Benega and Commissioner Hebert raised last week in our review of the video. But my concern is, I've worked with HOAs, I've worked with those kind of things. And it's really hard to hold hands and say kumbaya together with everybody there because it's just, it's hard to get an agreement. And I don't think the petitioners should be, you know, sacrifice the ability and the right to use their land because the Wall Lake residents haven't had an HOA put together. Now, again, on top of that, I'm not sure if you're going to sit and negotiate what, you know, you could do for, and protect for an Airbnb, what more there is that petitions already haven't done. You know, we've limited the users that can come. So we're only going to get high-quality people that are going to be there. We've, you know, I went through the restrictions, I'm not going to go through. But we've agreed to the restrictions voluntarily. And we've kind of all already done that, did that opportunity. So I really think that to hold us back and say, come back later after you visit with, you know, the petition, no, not the petitioners, but the opponents and the other people, and come back with a plan, you know, that plan can go three, four, or five years before it happens if it has ever happened. It hasn't happened in the last about 50 years. Why is it going to happen now in the next year or two? I'd just be surprised. The comment with regards to no more trailers, I guess I'm not familiar, I haven't seen any minutes, haven't seen, you know, anything other than what I just heard here. Trailers are a lot different than manufactured homes today. I mean, there's obviously been a difference in that. Manufactured homes are absolutely, as Commissioner Kerski mentioned, they're under the statute, the ordinances, they have to build a certain way, they have to have certain things done. And we're complying with all that, as we've talked about before at the last hearing. And I just, I think you can't talk about what a trailer looked like 30 years ago compared to what a manufactured home, even though they're under the same definition, they're different. They just are different at that point, so. I was just also to clarify the, the talk about that the dock is private or public. I was informed by the petitioner that they had visited with the equalization office. And that it is private, the GIS is wrong. And that wouldn't be the first time that the GIS is wrong, because I just had a hearing a year ago, a month ago, about that same thing, so. But I think that addresses those concerns that they brought up, and thank you again for your time.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions for proponents or opponents? Commissioner Bender?
I have a question for Kevin, I think.
Yep, Kevin.
So Kevin, some of the information that were provided, and honestly, I don't think this was available last week, but I couldn't swear by it. Is the numbers of Airbnbs. We have a document that says there are three hundred and thirty-nine homes listed with Airbnb in Minnehaha County. Is that, do you know who provided us that information?
I think they did.
The proponents did, okay. Do you have any idea if that information is correct?
Excuse me, I would assume that they got that off the website from what it appears like. And I don't know if that includes all the municipalities in the city and, and in the county as well. I know that the city of Sioux Falls has a registration for Airbnb, so their system is much simpler to, to get an Airbnb for a house, rather than this process here for us.
Okay, thank you.
Kevin, how many of the, how many Airbnb's are you aware that we have approved in Minnehaha County?
So since two thousand and sixteen, we have approved six Airbnb's. Excuse me, five. The sixth one was denied. And that was denied because we found out that the applicant was intending on using the Airbnb for a second dwelling and not for an Airbnb.
Do you know if the one on Wall Lake has approval?
It has not been approved. I have been contacted by a property owner who said that they've heard about all this going on. And was, was reaching out to see what would it take to get approval. They have until next week, Friday, is what I told them, to apply for a conditional use permit then.
And so is there a fine if you are running a business out of your home without?
So if you have a use already started prior to a conditional use application, it's a double application fee.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Barth?
Yeah, I was just going to say that the, the one that was declined there, where it was the family member going to move in, was trying to bypass the limits by building eligibility's. And, but I will say that, if I might go on with other comments. You know, there are arguments on both sides here, and I find it interesting. I think that a trailer from thirty years ago is not a manufactured home today. I think that's absolutely true. You know, this isn't grandma's phone either. And, well, it's my wife's phone and she's a grandma, but not my grandma, though. And, you know, as we get more crowded, it does seem like people become more disagreeable with each other. And working together, we can get so much more done. Interestingly, people complain that their property values would go down. Every year, we have dozens of people come and say, please lower my property values, every year. They don't like it when we don't lower them. So we have the use of the land. And this is an interesting location because these lots have building eligibility's that they inherited from the forties or so, isn't that right? When they, these are not standard lots. These, these are grandfathered in as special cases. And I do think that, I think that the best plan would be to go ahead and have folks meet in Congress and form a new homeowners' association. And I would ask the state's attorney if they're enough or further enough from the city of Sioux Falls to establish their own municipality.
It's probably not something you can answer on the fly, but good comment.
I think that, I think it's, you know, if, if people would work together, they can solve these problems. Every day, we have more and more people with, with issues with their neighbors and stuff. And we need to find other ways to solve them. Even if it means, you know, a legal structure or maybe some kind of religious revival.
Additional comments? I have one more comment, but continue, Commissioner Kerski?
Yeah, a comment, not a question. And if you look at the Sioux Falls growth maps from Fifty-seventh Street and maybe even a little south, all the way up to Highway Thirty-eight and all the way west to Wall Lake is the primary growth plan for the city of Sioux Falls. Wall Lake's a beautiful area and a lot of people want to be there, everybody wants to be on a lake. We have become the governing body for the Wall Lake homeowners. And we shouldn't be. We're the ones refereeing between somebody wanting to do something and not. The people that live out there are just gonna have, I mean, you get together to hire an attorney to represent you. You should be getting together to figure out what you want. Because if the gentleman that came up and says, I have five building eligibility's, I'd probably be in favor of approving them. I mean, it just, how do, if you own property, you have rights, you have eligibility's. I'm just encouraging you guys to get your act together and get something done before. Because we are gonna be seeing a lot more of this, period, so. Just encouraging it, thank you.
No, we're back to, we're back to just commission now at this point, so. I have one comment, and that was that the proponent said that they were only going to have six people and your conditions say nine, that needs to be changed. So whatever motion comes forward, if it's to uphold, then that needs to be changed in there. Is that the only one that needs to be changed on conditions? I think that was the only one that I heard that, that was different than what you guys have listed. Any other comments or questions from either side? I'm looking for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'm not gonna make a motion yet, but I would concur with Dean on this issue because, you know, we, we don't want to sit here and say, you can't paint your house red. We don't want to hear that his, his truck is too big for his garage. This is a neighborhood issue, should be solved by the neighbors. As our county gets more and more densely populated, people bump into each other more and more often. We had one that wanted to build a larger building on the edge of his property. And the neighbor said, I don't want it, I moved to the country so I wouldn't see big buildings. Well, as we get more crowded, it's, this is gonna happen more and more. We are not the governing body of Wall Lake.
And I'll make one more comment before they make a motion, because I kind of think I know where this is gonna go. So the motion can be to uphold it, and if the motion would go two-two, like it did last week. It uphold, if it went two people for and two people against, it upholds what the planning says. So if there's a motion made to uphold the planning, no matter how I vote, it's upheld. Because even if Commissioner Barth or one of them votes against it, unless there's a three-one vote, it's gonna go on a two-two to approve what the planning commission already has determined. Is that understood by where we're at? I think that's understood by the commission. So I will let a motion go forward.
I'll make a motion to uphold the action of the planning commission.
With the, with the modification of six people versus nine?
If that, if that can be done in one motion, yes.
I will second that motion.
And then I'm gonna make one more comment, and that is, I am going to agree with this because there, if I disagree, it doesn't make any difference. Because at this point, whatever Commissioner Barth does, or I do, it's going to pass. Because we have a two-two again, because we had to have an abstention. So I am going to be supporting the planning commission in their decision to move forward with this Airbnb, so.
Thought I had to come to be the decider.
You are still the decider, so I'm gonna look, ask for a roll call vote. I just, I wanted to make that statement ahead of time before we finished, because I hadn't made a comment.
Kerski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Barth?
No.
Hybarger?
Aye. Motion passes three to one. Still, to let you know, even if I would have voted no, it still would have passed. So that's the way it is. Your only recourse now is to take it to civil court. So if that's what they wanted to do, that's what they'd have to do, is to take it to civil court, so. With that being said, we're going to move on to our next one, which is item number eleven, which is an election briefing by Auditor Kite. Good morning.
Good morning. Let me clear up. Good morning, commissioners, Ben Kite, Auditor's Office. Here to give a briefing on the election. Hopefully, been informed that we did learn of a issue with the ballot on October thirteenth. We were informed that the candidates for the Minnehaha County Conservation District Supervisor roles were not included in the ballot. The reason for that was, the information I had for that race was that there were three open positions for the Minnehaha County Conservation District Supervisor role. And we have received three petitions from candidates. So with three candidates running for three offices, there's, we don't list those positions on the ballot. But when we learned on, what we learned on October thirteenth is that there were actually only two open positions with three candidates. So they, we should have had those positions on the ballot. So that was our error. You know, I guess, not sure how I could explain it. You know, I thought I contacted the correct people to get that information on, on the number of positions. Turned out to be, that turned out to be incorrect. So I, you know, or maybe some inexperience in my part of not knowing who the right contacts would be to follow up on that, so I, I own that error. So what we've tried to do to remedy this situation, we've worked with the state's attorney's office. They reviewed the situation and, and have a recommendation. We would ask the court that they allow us to have a special election that would allow for the voting of those two positions with three candidates. We would have a hearing with the court on November sixteenth. We would propose that the election date be set as middle of February with an absentee voting period consistent with what we have in a primary and general election of forty-six days. So the absentee voting period, if the court approves, would start on December thirty-first. We would recommend that they, we have one common voting precinct here at the county administration building, much like we're having now with our absentee voting. We would have that open for forty-six days. We'd have, people could request absentee ballots, we would mail them to them and process them like this, like any other election. But, you know, I, I realize that all elections are important, and I really apologize to the candidates and citizens of Minnehaha County on this, not having this election or this race included in the ballot. If I take any questions, or I could continue with a briefing update on the election in general.
Questions or comments, Commissioner Barth?
Your job is very difficult, and I myself am a candidate for reelection to the East Dakota Water Development District. My name does not appear on the ballot for that, because I was the only one took out papers. And I think that's true for all the other four or five members of the East Dakota Water Development District. And so there are other organizations besides the county offices, the state offices, that we have to administer in the election process. And that also includes other things like the amendments that are on the ballot, et cetera. And, and each, each precinct may well have many different formulas. And I, I think it's an amazing thing that you're able to get these things organized as well as you have. And I, I thank you for, for your efforts. And I, I think this proposed solution would, would work well, so, thank you.
I would also say this is not the first time that this has ever happened in the state of South Dakota. So it's not like it's, not, it's not a common thing, but it happens. And someone else had wrong information and passed on wrong information. And we depend on our partners to get stuff right, so Commissioner Kerski?
Kind of an aside, I guess, I agree, Commissioner Barth, I mean, the Wall Lake Sewer District, I wonder when they had their last election, or when, when that one's come up, or if they've had an election. There seemed to be confusion as to, is there one or isn't there one? Is there anything prescribed in law about when the election has to be held by? Is it as soon as possible? Is it at the discretion of the commission board? The court decides? Do you have a certain answer on that?
I don't, I might defer to my state's attorney's office to, for some comments.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Kerski, the, the law is actually silent on this. So the, the date proposed in the application for the writ of mandamus is the first available date that complies with as much of the election cycle as is consistent with normal elections, both the primary and general, as Auditor Kite's already illuminated. So we were, are required to give notice to the population of Minnehaha County for at least ten days prior to the hearing, when the judge would allow us to apply for the writ and set the new election. So that's two weeks on top of the thirty days that we need to obtain the printed ballots. And then the forty-six days for the absentee election period. So it just couldn't be any sooner than that. So even if it said first available date, this actually is the first available date that, that matches those criteria. Having an election on Valentine's Day is not ideal, but it is the, the first Tuesday that complies with those timetables that, that is available, so.
Thank you.
Can I vote for my Valentine?
I was gonna say, maybe I'll get more people out, it's Valentine's Day. Okay, I think that you can go on with your presentation.
Yeah, just, just, just a briefing on the, on election that we're, for November eighth. Absentee voting is in full swing. We've received over ten thousand absentee ballots already. This, or distributed ten, over ten thousand ballots. Of those, about forty-eight hundred have been walk-ins, so that's why we have, had a lot of traffic up here. People voting early in person. That represents about eight percent of the active voters of the county. We would expect somewhere between ten and fifteen percent absentee voting turnout. So it's gonna be, I think that's historically about what we see, in that ten to twenty percent range. So still a lot of interest in absentee voting. We also are holding our absent, our election training this week. So we had over a hundred of election workers attend training yesterday afternoon. We'll have training again this afternoon, Wednesday and Thursday, along with tonight, Wednesday and Thursday evenings. You know, we have over three hundred and fifty poll workers. You know, another fifty to a hundred absentee workers, that they all have to be trained and organized. So appreciate all their help. And then Election Day, November eighth. I would expect a late night results. You know, we finished up with the primary at about eleven. I would expect we'll be somewhere well past midnight, two, three o'clock in the morning, before we have our final results. But hopefully, we're, we've been working very hard and we think we'll be prepared.
Any questions for Auditor Kite? And I think there is a new state law, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, that states that election workers can't leave until all the, all the ballots are counted, is that correct?
Well, the auditor is required to stay until the, the count is completed. Doesn't speak to any other staff, but, yeah, so. But we expect to, everybody knows it's gonna be a late night. And hopefully, people have, give us some grace there for the, you know, that period of time. Those people who will be running the tabling machines will have come to the office at six o'clock that morning. And like I said, they'll be here, I expect till two o'clock in the morning, just because that's about the volume we get. So it'll be a long, very long day.
Thank you, thank you to your staff, too, for all the work they're doing, because it is a lot of hours.
What's the status of counting the absentee ballots? Are we able to start before seven o'clock?
Yeah, so we will, we asked the absentee board- Yeah, so we will, we asked the absentee board to arrive at, here at 8:30 in the morning. And then we have them start opening those ballots. When they start getting them completed, we process them by precinct. So as soon as we get some of those processed, probably around 11:00 in the morning, we start processing those ballots. We don't report any results until after the polls close, but we can count, count those effectively using our tabulating machines throughout the day.
Thank you. Additional questions, comments? Thank you for coming and giving us an update. I know you guys have been crazy busy, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. That will move on to item, oh, I need to say, was there anybody from the public that wanted to comment on that agenda item? We will go on to item number 12, which is the Sioux Falls Development Foundation presentation by Mr. Munt.
Thank you, County Commissioners. My name is Bob Munt and I'm the President and CEO of the Sioux Falls Development Foundation. First, before I get started, I just wanted to say thank you all for serving in this capacity. You put in a lot of time. I know you get paid a little bit, but we really appreciate all the work that you guys do. And to those of you that are going off the commission, special thanks to you for your work. And Gerald, best of luck to you. And happy birthday, a few weeks late, by the way. We share.
Really old.
For those of you who don't know. As I mentioned, my name is Bob Munt and I represent the Sioux Falls Development Foundation. I want to kind of give you an update of some of the stuff that's happening over in, in our office today and kind of moving forward into 2023, give you an idea of where we're positioned and where we're at. So is my, my clicker up here or? Just the arrow key, up, down, or sideways? Down, okay, let's try that, okay. Is there a faster way than? Okay, there we go. All right, couple of things. Sorry, technology is not my friend. What, just kind of want to start out, a couple of things that we've moved forward on over this last year. We have been able to purchase some additional property that is essentially east of Foundation Park, so what we call a Foundation Park East. It's across the interstate, Interstate 29, basically at the intersection of 29 and 90. I'm sorry, yes, 29 and 90. It's about 135 acres. It was formerly owned by the Steinekes. We've actually got a closing on that this afternoon, so we'll be acquiring that property this afternoon. We don't have a lot of plans for that yet to move that forward, but we are looking at, again, how we can use that land to the best of our ability. We also purchased some additional property north of what we, is now Foundation Park, previously owned by Darian Jan Benson. We are, we purchased the 80 acres kind of to the west of this lot that you see here. And then just recently, we signed a purchase agreement that'll close, not for a couple of years yet actually, on his actual farmstead that's there. So we own everything almost to the Renner Crooks Road up there. And the city of Crooks actually has annexed that little kind of square that you see on the south portion of that road. But we do own another 150 or so acres there as well. So we feel that we're pretty well positioned over the next several years to continue to grow Foundation Park, either on the east side or, or north here. We've also, you may have read in the paper, we've done a sale basically to the National Guard. They're gonna put their readiness center in, over in Park 8 West. We just completed that north-south road, the extension of, extension of Bonson. So it now connects Benson with 60th Street there through that particular park. The red area you see there is the actual location that they're gonna build the readiness center. And then the ground south of that, we're working with an exchange with us and the Corps of Engineers, basically, for us to acquire that particular piece of property as well, so that all of that can be kind of that National Guard Training Center. And we're looking at a, a land swap on that as well. And there to the right, you can kind of see what that area might look like. There's actually, there was a groundbreaking last week, Friday, on that. And then they'll be actually acquiring that property on this Thursday. And I'm told that they're gonna have earth movers out there already on Friday. So it's gonna move pretty quickly out there. Couple of projects that we've been working on, Project Searger, Searger closed, a 10-acre piece out in Foundation Park. Again, it's about 120,000 square foot building that they're looking at. There's 71 employees currently. They're gonna add another 35 employees. They're a good wage company, they're in that $23 an hour minimum, so up from there. It's a good company, they're actually moving from T up to Foundation Park. They needed more additional property to expand and so we were able to keep them here as well. Project Fisher is a project we've been working on for several months now. It's a Fortune 100 company, it's a transportation company. They have looked at ground, they've actually visited the site. We've had multiple conversations with them and they're looking at a facility in our park as well. So again, a large facility, 80 to 100 jobs, really good salaries on this one. So we're really excited about this. And we've got about a six-month close date on this one. Foundation Park, we've got 43 acres at the end of the, what we call the horseshoe in Foundation Park. That is also under option right now. It's currently in the Rail Association, so we're kind of working through some issues with the Rail Association there. Again, under option at this particular point in time. What we're finding is these larger tracts of ground require longer options so then to do their due diligence and those types of things. Many of them take a little bit of time to kind of work through their inner processes, if you will, for closing and acquiring. And so we're, we're trying to be more patient with some of these and, you know, have that six-month window. We're also doing a fair amount of grading. Most of you have seen the area out in Foundation Park north of the railroad tracks. So kind of this area up in here is all being graded out. If you've been out there recently, probably a little bit hard for you to get in there, but right now they've got most of the property graded out there. They've got the roads kind of roughed in on that as well. And right now, we're starting these two lots, which are along Marion Road here and then 259th, kind of in that corner piece that has not been graded out yet. So they have a completion date of November 15th on this. So they're gonna be working pretty diligently to get that all graded out too. So after this, all of our property essentially will be graded that we have right now. And then the two options that I talked about earlier, those will be graded sometime in the future. So again, looking at a lot of work, a lot of dirt flying out there. When my mom asked me the other day what I was doing, I said, "I'm playing in the dirt." So she said, "Just like when you were a kid." So it was great. Foundation Park, the grading plan, again, you can see phase one, phase two, phase three. Phase three is gonna be done actually next year. It's the completion of 259th and we're delayed on that a little bit because of the telephone, or the power poles that are there. There's a major transmission line that runs down that 259th street. They're having trouble getting poles to relocate that. So we're on kind of a, a supply delay with the poles. And so we're looking at next year before we're gonna get those poles moved and that actual road done. But before that, we'll have Opportunity Drive done, we'll have the Searger Avenue done. And then that one will be done then next year. So again, I told you about the road that was put in there. Again, that is complete. If you want to go out there and drive on that road, you can do that. It is done. So again, that'll open up about 100 acres there in Foundation Park, excuse me, in Park 8 West as well. Want to also talk a little bit today about workforce. Tomorrow, actually, we have our Win and Workforce Summit. It's out at the, Denny, it's out at the Premier Center. So we'll be out there with now, probably about 600 other people doing our workforce summit. We have students out there, we have HR people, we have people that hire for a living. So we've got a lot of people out there tomorrow that are gonna be looking to fill jobs. Our program at the foundation is set up really through, three different pillars, if you will. We have the talent attraction piece, we have talent development, and then the business partnership. And the Wind Summit falls underneath that Wind Partnership. And I want to talk a little bit about a couple of these other ones as we move forward here. So we have a number of talent attraction programs. These are called our Talent Tower, if you will. We do talent tours, program called Talent Now, a draft day, which is kind of a recruitment job fair on steroids, if you will. We've got Talent Rebound, which attracts alumni from our high schools and our colleges and universities around here back to the region. Talent Thursdays, which is an online version of our workforce development plan. And then our newest one is called Interns Sioux Falls. We're really staffing up that. We have hired a person to actually be our internship coordinator. So that person will coordinate between colleges, universities, and tech schools within about 100 mile radius of us. And will coordinate with our businesses in this community to figure out how they can get interns to come in and work for their companies throughout the summer months of 2023. We hope that that will bring them here to Sioux Falls, to get a taste of what it's like to be here. They'll get kind of a test period, if you will, for those companies or with those companies. And we hope that that then leads to long-term employment with those interns. Figure the more people we can get here to work in internships at those jobs, the more we'll be able to keep. So that's kind of the push behind that. Talent programs, again, we have some that reach down into the high schools and the middle schools. Career Connections is a program where we take high school students from six different high schools around the region and we plug them into companies here where they learn about what that company does, what types of skill sets those people need, and working at those jobs. And then they have an opportunity then to actually do a job shadow and an apprenticeship program at those companies, one of those companies that they choose, and then move on with that company. We find many of them probably get hired before they even get out of high school. They go to work for the company after they graduate and then that company helps them to pay for continuing education at some of our tech schools and universities. So it's a great program to get those kids into the system. A lot of these are kids that have been targeted because they really don't have plans after high school. And so we've showing them what there is to do here locally. And so that gets them into those areas. Your STEM, your future STEM is, is at our middle school program. They, again, most of our career exploration, those types of things, finding out there. The picture there that you see kind of on the right is that type of a program where those kids are learning how to do stuff and what to do in those particular areas. We also work a lot with people with disabilities in opportunity workshops. We have a second chance job fair that we were, worked through the corrections department to help reskill some of those individuals as well. And a new program that we stood up this last year called Upskill Sioux Falls, which allows companies to take employees that they currently have and upskill them into higher paying positions. And so right now, we're targeting the CDL driver's licenses because we have such a need for truck drivers in this particular area. We've put over 100 people through that program right now. So right now, we have about 100 more truckers out there that are able to fill those roles. We're looking at CNC operations, diesel mechanics, nursing, those types of programs kind of following up in future years with that. Again, the business partnership program, we run a recruitment council, which is 400 HR professionals that meet on a regular basis, basically quarterly, and talk about best practices and things that are happening within their companies and the ways that they're retaining their employees and getting new employees and kind of new ideas out there that people have. We also have the Wind Summit, as I mentioned, coming up tomorrow. We're standing up the Health Sciences Clinical Simulation Center out at STI or STC. That will be functional hopefully fall of 2023. It is a simulation center for the medical profession, basically nurses, techs, those types where they can do simulated training out there and run through that program. And that's a partnership with STC as well as USD and some of the nursing programs in the state as well. And then our last one that we have there is called Work Sioux Falls. And that's more of an outreach program that we're targeting essentially five metropolitan areas within kind of the Midwest. So we're, we're targeting Omaha, Council Bluff, Sioux City, Fargo, Des Moines, and the Twin Cities, basically, for workers. And we're using a lot of technology to do that, geo fencing, a lot of targeting of high schools, colleges, universities in those areas to try and let them know that there are jobs available in Sioux Falls. And this program actually directs them to our website, sioufals.com, which then gets them to the workforce site. And from there, they can go directly to these companies and apply for those jobs online with each one of those companies. So we're having great success with that. Once they get to the companies, we don't know what happens to them after that because it becomes a privacy issue. But we know that about, I think, 1,500, 1,600 of our companies have hired from that particular process right now. So again, we don't know how many they've hired, we just know that they've hired. Career Connections, again, we talked a little bit about that. These are just some numbers for that. Again, a good program. One of the programs in Career Connections is our welding program. We're starting that up with T right now in the high school at T. There right now are 90 students that are going through that particular program. They will be skilled in welding when they come out of that program. So they will be able to go to work here for some of our employers here. That's a pilot program, so we're gonna see how that goes and see if we can do other similar programs at other high schools. Interns Sioux Falls, I talked about that. Our goal is to have 500 to 600 interns each year here in Sioux Falls. Moving forward, Upskill, we talked a little about that. Work Sioux Falls, this is an example of some of the things that we're doing online. Again, 9 million impressions, 844,000 interactions. And this is the numbers that we really pay attention to. These are the clicks that actual people click on employers and actually apply for jobs online. So these are the numbers that you see. You can see the two hospitals up there are pretty popular, some of our larger companies as well, getting a lot of hits there as well. Our web traffic, we've seen go from 912 to 81,000. So again, a pretty good bump in web traffic as well. And these are some of the states that we're seeing people come from. So when you click on this, it's kind of weird. You look at California, 20, almost 2,800 inquiries coming from California, New York, Colorado, places like that as well. So it's fun to kind of watch, look through those. And then this is our program for tomorrow. So that's kind of the end of my program. We've got a couple of additional initiatives, our Startup Sioux Falls program. We're working with them to start up their operation. You might be familiar with the old Parks and Rec Building, that's being transformed right now into the new Startup Sioux Falls position. We're gonna have a downtown presence there. And then we also stood up this last year, 501(c)(3) Corporation called the Falls Area Development Fund, which is really looking at how we can redevelop areas, not only of Sioux Falls, but of areas of communities around us where we can go in and maybe clean up some contamination, clean up some slum and blight, those types of things, be able to redevelop that area into more tax-producing, more productive uses. The childcare collaborative funding, we also contributed to that this year because that's part of workforce development as well. And we need to make sure that we get as many people into the workforce as we possibly can. And childcare is a big issue here. So we're trying to kind of stimulate that a little bit more as well. So with that, that's kind of the end of my presentation to you. Again, thank you so much for what you do for us. We're having a great time out there trying to build the communities here and also around us. And so I'll take any questions that you guys might have.
Thanks, Bob. Are there some questions for Bob? We just have one. How much of that, just reminding me, how much of that foundation area is in the TIF? Is all of it in the TIF? Or, because it's all in the TIF.
So since our acquisition of property north of that, not all of that is in the TIF. Essentially, if you, if you consider everything north of the railroad tracks, except for those two areas, so everything north of the tracks, plus those two yellow areas that I talked about that we're grading out, plus Amazon, that's in the TIF. And right now, Amazon is the one that's producing the TIF revenue, basically, to fund the development within the Tax Increment Financing District. Once we start putting more companies in there, those tax revenues will also be collected and used to pay down the bonds that we use to, to fund that.
And so the project on the east side from the Steinekes is not a part of the TIF?
That is not part of the TIF, that's correct.
Any additional questions? Thanks so much for the presentation, it's always exciting.
Thank you, thanks for having me.
Is there any comments from the public on this item? All right, with that, we'll move on to number 13, which is the Glory House presentation.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Nikki DeVorek and I am the President of Glory House. I, I want to begin by thanking you for the service that you have for our community and the continued support for Glory House that you've invested in us for decades. I brought two of my six great managers with, so I'll have them introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Carrie Jolder-Smam, I'm the clinical manager at Glory House.
Hi, I am Kristi Husbey, I am the office manager at the Glory House.
And Glory House started in 1968, many of you are familiar with that, under the direction and the dream of Roger Fredrickson. And so we've been able to keep faithful to our mission, which is to help people claim their lives with Christian compassion, resources, and support. What we have been able to do over the past year, since my last meeting with you, is we've really developed a stronger base of services for, I'm gonna take a breath, because sometimes your, your faces are very pleasant, but I get worked up because I'm not familiar with you that much. So if you can just amuse me for a minute. Okay. So since last year, there's been a lot of different pieces happening at the agency. We've had the opportunity to move forward with a lot of different phases with the apartments. We are working with the Just Home Program, which is also aligned with the We are working with the Just Home Program, which is uh also aligned with the county. And the Just Home Program, we are working with them for a commitment of fifteen apartments for people who have been involved with the criminal justice system, as well as having some uh minority populations. Because we all know that that particular group really struggles with high percentage of incarceration, as well as being ec- ec- economically disadvantaged. And so with the apartments, what we're currently doing is with South Dakota Housing, they are reviewing our application. The hope is that we are gonna receive some information probably by the beginning part of December on the status of the next phase of the apartments, which will be fifty-one units. And with the, our internal program at Glory House, we've really done some cool things. As you know, that the city of Sioux Falls and the county really are facing some challenges and staff shortages. Now, I'm not gonna reveal my secrets because there's, as nonprofits go, it's very competitive for your employee pool. Uh, but we've just been able to craft some very unique, uh very appealing uh perks for our employees, and they really feel a high level of investment. Uh, we've been able to maintain a hundred percent of management effective November sixteenth, which is really cool. We've had a hundred percent retention for our counseling team for one year, a hundred percent retention for our case managers. And we've had some changes with the office staff, only because one of our favorite people left and retired and relocated to Mitchell. We couldn't control that, but she still misses us. Uh, what we've been able to do is really build up our management team, so they've been able to build up their team. And most of you know that when people feel more invested, they're more likely to continue to stay because they feel that reward and that appreciation from their employee. And so when I talk to people, the board and different community members, uh what I say to them is, my hope is that when employees meet people in the community and somebody asks them, what do you do? I say, I work with Glory House. I don't say I'm president, because being president is cool and all, it, it really is. I, but what's really cooler is that I work with the people that I love, not only the clients, but the staff. And so I know that this is probably a little bit off script, but I think it was important for me to let you know. As we build up our team at the agency, we're investing at our clients at a much deeper level. Because when people love what they do, you're gonna have a customer base who really leave with a satisfied, uh well-developed plan. Whether you go to a restaurant and you really enjoy a great meal, or you come to Glory House, you get some really great services, and you leave because you know the people who work there, they don't work there, they're there because they care about you. And so that's all I've really had to say this morning. Um, does anyone have any questions?
I don't see any questions, but thanks, Nikki. And you do do great work, and there is a lot of exciting things that are happening at Glory House with partnership with the city of Sioux Falls and the county. So appreciate the work you do because we need you.
Well, thank you very much, and sorry my voice is getting jittery.
That's okay.
I promise next year, if you guys are kind enough to support us again, I will not be shaking.
You know what? A lot of us have been on the other side over there, and it is a shaky spot to be, so thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Is there anyone that wants to comment on this particular presentation?
Madam Chair, I would just say, just like many other NGOs, uh if they weren't here, we would have to spend more money uh from the taxpayer to accomplish the mission that they raise their hand to do. And so thank you all very much.
Okay, with that, we'll go on to item number fourteen, which is authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and Summit Food Services for the JDC School Lunch Program. Jamie?
Good morning, commissioners, Jamie Grabett, Juvenile Detention Center. Before you today is our annual contract for food service at JDC. We did a bid process, we received one bid, and that was from Summit Food Service, who's been our longtime partner as it is. Uh, the increase is quite large this year of twenty-nine percent. Uh, we are within budget even with that twenty-nine percent increase. Uh, we knew there was gonna be an increase and kind of planned for it. With that, any questions regarding the food service?
And for me, is there any comments from the public? Okay, I'd like for motion.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, roll call vault, please.
Barth.
Hi.
Benega.
Hi.
Bender.
Hi.
Karski.
Hi.
Hi, Burger.
Hi, motion passes unanimously, thanks, Jamie. Item number fifteen is consider a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three health and dental insurance premiums. Carrie Dever, good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. I'm in front of you today with what I consider to be good news overall. During the budget process, we plan for about a ten percent increase in premiums. And of course, we always set that at the outer limits, hoping we can go less. Um, the results of this year's analysis shows that we're able to do a six percent increase on dental insurance premiums and an overall five percent increase on health insurance premiums.
Can we clap for you?
Oh, no, let's clap for all of us, I think we're a very lucky year.
Yeah.
So better news than we've had maybe in previous years. But just to go over some of the highlights, um same type of charts as I've shown you in the past. What you're seeing is by the last five years, the dental claim costs, the admin fees, and the total cost of operating our dental insurance plan. And as a reminder, that is our own county insurance plan, we design the coverage levels. Um, as you can see, we're anticipating that we may end twenty twenty-two with about four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars worth of costs. Our current premium levels are taking in about four hundred and ninety-three thousand. Based on that, um, we would need, for the projections for twenty twenty-three, we would need about a six percent increase. If you remember past figures, you might look at thirteen percent and say, why so high? This year, we're looking at our trend, which is about seven percent, and we're implementing a new prevention pays program, which will allow people, once they've hit their maximum, if they haven't had time for their second cleaning, that will still allow them coverage for that second cleaning. So we anticipate about a six percent cost to add that program, but a program we think is very worthwhile. So based on that, we're projecting five hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars in expenses for next year, so the six percent premium increase should cover that. The next page shows you that by breakdown. What I'd like to highlight on this is just a reminder that during budget hearings, the commission was generous enough to approve a change in the premium split. Right now, it's seventy thirty, it's gonna move to seventy-five percent county paid and twenty-five percent employee paid. Because of that, even though we're experiencing a six percent increase in our premiums overall, the employee cost will go down per pay period, which is more great news. Moving on to the health insurance, same type of analysis that you see her for the health plan costs. Um, couple extra columns there for our stop-loss insurance, which again is our reinsurance, um and our prescription claims. This year, you see a couple of boxes highlighted in gray. The reason they're grayed out is we are experiencing a small claim lag right now in processing. So I'm projecting out um what I anticipate our expenses would be instead of basing it on experience. Um, so I've got about a ten percent applied on those two, two grayed boxes. For our projected twenty twenty-three costs, we're using a twelve percent increase on the claims, which we think is fair, given our experience, and increases that we're expecting for inflation. Um, based on that, what we're looking for projected expense is about seven point seven million. From our premiums where they're at right now, we would need a five percent overall increase. The next page is where it gets a little bit different from past years. And those of you who are here in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen might remember that we did a rate alignment at that time. And what that really refers to is we wanna make sure that by coverage tier, we're charging an overall premium that is representative of the cost of the plan. So right now, our rate alignment is two point four for E plus one and three point four for family. We're gonna make a small change in that for next year and make that two point five five for employee plus one and three point five five for family insurance. And that again is a better representation of the cost those tiers are to the plan overall. So you'll see, I've shown you this year on that line what the total premium is for twenty twenty-two. The twenty twenty-three area shows that twenty twenty, the increase by tier for each of the employee, E plus one and family. So again, good news is nothing is going up by ten percent as we anticipated. And then the next few lines just break it down by that seventy-five, twenty-five split. And again, because of that change in premium split, the good news is employee premiums will go down in every single area. So the next page will show you again that information, how you've traditionally seen it, employee-only coverage. Employees can expect a sixteen dollar per pay period decrease, um E plus one about twenty-six dollars, and family coverage about forty-two dollars. So good news.
More money in their paycheck, which right now we need.
Yes.
Great benefit.
And that last chart is just an uh historical overview for you, which shows that even though we've had a couple of years, as you all remember, where claims um were significantly higher than our trend, overall, we're still averaging fairly well.
Commissioner Karski?
So we do three-way rating, plus we pay seventy-five percent, doesn't matter if you're employee, employee plus one or family.
Exactly.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Additional questions for Carrie? Are there any questions from the public? No one's moving, okay, thanks, Carrie.
Thank you.
Um, we need a, we don't, yes, we do.
Motion to approve the plan.
Second.
I have a motion and a second with roll call vault, please.
Karski.
Hi.
Bender.
Hi.
Benega.
Hi.
Barth.
Hi.
Hi, Burger.
Hi, motion passes unanimously. Next one is consider a motion to approve the change to the county's policy on employee recognition.
We're recommending a change to the county's policy and procedure manual on employee recognition. Currently, there's a provision that covers how much um the county pays towards retirement recognition. I went back through our records trying to find the last time we adjusted this, I couldn't find it, so I'm gonna guess it's been many, many years. So while it might seem like a large percentage increase, it's only fifty dollars, and we don't think it's been adjusted for several years. So we're recommending two hundred and fifty dollars per retirement.
Any questions on that? I'd like, need a motion.
Need any public comment?
Oh, yes, there any public comment on this one? Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve, I need a roll call vault, please.
Karski.
Hi.
Bender.
Hi.
Barth.
Hi.
Benega.
Hi.
Hi, Burger.
Hi, motion passes unanimously, thanks, Carrie. Next is our opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here who wants to speak about something that we haven't already talked about? Nobody's moving. Uh, Commissioner Liaison reports. Commissioner Karski?
Last night, well, yesterday, late afternoon, from three-thirty to almost six o'clock, the um link board met as a strategic planning session. And um the only thing we really didn't have to look at was the um, the data, the fully analyzed data. You know, we have basically four, four hundred thousand dollar contributors to the link, the city, the county, Haveria and Sanford for a one point six million dollar operating budget. Our operations in the last year are on trend to be about two point one million plus. So you're probably thinking, well, that seems like a pretty big shortfall. Fortunately, um reimbursements from insurance and um other sources have come in right at four hundred thousand or a little north of that. So we are actually operating very close to a break-even uh budget at this point. Um, we will have a board meeting tomorrow, and um again, waiting for the data and the analytics on, you know, who's benefiting and, you know, et cetera, for to keep things moving forward, there'll be further discussion. But at this point, I would tell you that the link is meeting its goals, its mission. We are doing our best to stay within the parameters of what is defined, and um we are actually doing okay budgetarily.
That's good news. There's always a lot of hiccups in the first year, and we've been there a year and a half now.
Yep, exactly.
Any other liaison reports, Commissioner Barth?
Last night, again, we had our uh regularly scheduled uh Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and uh we again had some neighborhood uh issues that are not really soluble by us, solvable. Uh, and uh I'm sure they'll be uh back, but uh we asked them to try to behave and uh forgive each other, whatever. But uh every, you know, every little thing uh is being complained about. There's uh, there's letters that are signed, letters that are aren't, aren't signed, uh photographs uh uh from who knows exactly when. And uh people, uh, I don't wanna live on that street, I can tell you that. Uh, but you know, this is the kind of thing, just like we had earlier today, that uh not only can't we solve it, but it's really not for us to even tangle with. Uh, our state's attorney was present, and uh he'll confirm that it was a uh Byzantine uh exercise of futility. Anyway, I hope they don't appeal to us.
Any other liaison reports? And I go to non-actionable commission discussion. The only one I would bring up was, uh Carol was gonna have you write a note, but I forgot. And that was, I would like to reconvene the um, um, the fan group, the Financial Action Network Group. And I'm wondering if you're um in agreement with that, that would, we would contact them. I think we've got a lot of things going on, we know where our projections are from our auditors department. We had the presentation last week from um the rural uh community development area, which that's not what it's called, the Sioux, Sioux Empire. Sioux Metro. Um, and just, there's a lot of questions on the board, and I think it's um, you know, and our, also our juvenile justice um center. I think there's a lot of other questions on the board, and I just would like to know if there's consensus that we have the office contact them and see if we can get them to look at our finances one more time, so.
Yeah, when we did it last time was five years ago, and they, they looked out to twenty twenty-three, and oh my God, we're at twenty twenty-three, so yeah, it makes sense.
Yeah.
I think it would be good, I'd like to see kind of a, a charter for what it is we're asking them to look at. And um, you know, making sure that we're all on the same page about what they're, they're being asked to do.
Yep, yep, so maybe we could get Tyler to put some, um, some pencil to it and also um reach out and see what the availability would be, so. All right, uh Carol, did I have something else? I think that was my main thing, okay. Gotta look to her, cause I forget. All right, I look for a motion to recess for um executive session, and I would say, let's give ourselves ten minutes.
That's my motion.
So ten forty, please.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously, we have a recess.